Good morning, everyone. We are back from recess. And during our last recess, we completed the hearing. We completed the hearing with the witness, Mrs. Bernadita C. Palacios, the Director of Finance and Accounting. Today, we will receive the testimony of Mrs. Matilda A. Rosario. She will be the witness. Today is Matilda here. Can you please step up? Thank you, Ms. Matilda Rosario. And Ms. Viola Alapuzo is the counsel on record. Is that correct? Thank you, and good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
It is now 10:14 a.m., July 15th, and I hereby call this hearing to order. Before we begin, I'd like to take care of some administrative or housekeeping rules. We ask that everyone please silence your cellphones and observe COVID protocols in place. Thank you. And also, one other administrative matter that we need to take care of are just to let everybody know. Our questions will be posed in English, and if you understand the question, you may answer. If you do not understand the question, you may request the assistance of an interpreter to translate the question either to Chamor or English, depending on what the questions are. If you choose to respond in Chamor, your response will be translated into English. When you respond to a question, we ask that you please speak at a pace so that the translator or interpreter is allowed ample time to make the proper translation.
Okay, got it.
We understand also that speaking Chamor is your right, and we acknowledge that and we encourage it. We respect that right. We understand that you may feel more comfortable speaking in Chamor. However, the process of translating your responses will cause a delay in this investigative hearing. But to ensure that everyone can understand your responses, we will translate them into English. We have absolutely no objection to you speaking in the vernacular, and we welcome it. But it would be respectfully asked of you, for the sake of time, if you could speak English whenever possible.
我会理解的.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize or introduce to you the members of this committee. To my left, I have the Vice Chair, Representative B.J. Attell. To his left is Representative Donald Manglona, representing Rota. To his left is Representative Tina Sablon. And to her left is Representative Ed Probst. To my right is Representative Vicente Camacho. And to his right is Representative Richard Lozama. I also want to recognize the assistance of our legal counsels, Mr. Joe Tygeron and also Mr. Joe Bermindis. And our legislative assistant for this committee is Mr. Cameron Nicholas. And to my right is Mrs. Florence Kirby, a court-certified translator for the Chamor and Carolinian language. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Joe Tygeron to administer the oath to the translator first and then to the witness. Thank you.
Do you swear to translate truthfully from English to Chamor or Chamor to English to the best of your ability? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
May we now ask the witness to please stand to be administered the oath.
Mrs. Matilda A. Rosario, do you solemnly swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you shall give in the matter at hand shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Thank you. You may be seated. Before we proceed, I'd like to explain why you've been summoned before the JGO Committee. You are here before the committee because the 22nd House of Representatives has opened the investigation into the Governor, expenditures of public funds by Governor Ralph Torres, and you are here in relation to your duties as Special Assistant for Administration. This committee is authorized by the CNMI Constitution to review, inspect, examine, and conduct investigations and oversight, and recommend reforms into the executive and judiciary branches of our government and its agencies. For the purposes, I'm sorry. I will, each member is authorized to make inquiries of you and as well as other members of the House of Representatives if they choose to come in and join. And that is all for the administrative duties. At this time, I would like to recognize Representative Donald Manglona.
Thank you, Chair. And good morning to everyone here today. I would like to start off by first asking the witness called in to please state your full name and position for the record.
我是Matilda Adal Rosario， Special Assistant for Administration.
And are you per-
One moment, Representative. I'd like to recognize the interpreter to please translate that in English.
I am Matilda A. Rosario. I am the Special Assistant to the Administration.
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. And are you present with counsel today?
是的.
Can you please provide the name of your, sorry?
Recognize the interpreter, please.
Yes.
And are you, can you please provide the full name of your counsel?
Viola Alapuzo.
And are you retaining counsel in your private capacity?
是的.
Yeah. Interpreter can translate her. She said, "是的." Representative Manglona, would you like to repeat your question?
Yes. Are you retaining counsel in your private capacity?
是的，不
Did the Attorney General authorize government-paid counsel for you?
是的，是的.
Is the Attorney General's office paying for your counsel?
是的，不
And how long have you held this position as the Special Assistant to the Administration?
From 2019 up to this day, going on two and a half years.
Thank you. And sorry, going back, who is paying for your counsel?
The Office of the Administration under the auspices of the Office of the Governor.
All right, thank you for clarifying. For the record, can you please briefly describe your duties and responsibilities?
我作为Special Assistant于行政
Excuse me. Oh, you won that. I'm going to ask you to pause at every sentence so the translator, to give her time to translate. Thank you.
我作为Special Assistant于行政
My work-
Please pause.
My work as a Special Assistant to the Administration embraces all work. Go ahead.
包括员工，行政
Such as employment in the administration.
Objection. That's not an accurate translation. She did not say employment. She said employees.
Noted, counsel. May I ask the witness to please repeat that phrase?
Such as employees of the administration. The multi-purpose center and the Office of Youth Affairs. And also manage the House of the Government.
Objection again. She did not say manage. She said management.
Noted. Please continue.
That were given to us when trust territory stopped in existence.
Please pause.
And all other authorized travel that is authorized by the Governor. Go ahead.
Objection again. She said, "and all authorized responsibilities such as travel."
Noted. Please proceed.
And all others that the Governor authorized me to do. That's what I do.
Thank you. Representative Manglona?
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. And what were you doing prior to your role as the SAA?
I am the Special Assistant to employment.
And who was the SAA before your time?
是Shirley Ogomo-Rokamatsu.
Is maintaining an inventory of the Governor's office part of your duties and responsibilities?
是的.
Can you please explain how do you do that? How do you maintain inventory for equipment and for supplies?
One moment.
Privilege.
Representative Sablon?
Thank you. If we can may just request the interpreter speak into the microphone. It has to be on. The light has to be on for us to hear.
May I ask the witness to please repeat her response? I'm going to have to ask you to please break it up so that our interpreter can follow.
Okay. So-
Can you begin from the top?
Okay.
Every employee in each section of the administration
由政府
Under the Governor's office
责任 支付，支付 对于库存
It's the responsibility to indicate on paper what is it that they have for inventory purposes.
So the employee maintains the record and then gives that to you, and you keep those records?
I would compile them together in case they have a need to know more. I have those documents.
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. And can you please explain how the Governor's office maintains its inventory to ensure that all items are recorded and accounted for?
你意思是说，东西
You mean the things? Other things?
No, all inventoried items. How does the Governor's office properly record and account for them?
对于采购
I'm going to have to ask you to please-
They prepare all in paper, undocumented, and in procurement.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Process because they are not necessary
以及部门
But they are indicated in the documents that the things are there.
Again, objection. The witness said the things are there at the office.
Acknowledged.
Can you please describe some of the items that are recorded and tracked in the Governor's office? Such as what types of equipment, what types of supplies, and what types of vehicles?
所有，所有
All of the ones that I have presented on the list.
库存这些库存
Under the inventory when I presented here in August.
21 2020 政府
They were all there.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rosario. Chair, you-
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize Representative Vicente Camacho.
Thank you, Chair. And welcome, Matilda, Ms. Rosario and
是的
On August 7, 2020, the 21st House of Representatives Special Committee that was investigating the Governor's expenditures requested the following from you. First, the make, model numbers, and government tag numbers for all electronic equipments, devices, or similar items in the Office of the Governor, including all medical referral offices within and outside of the CNMI, including but not limited to any or no computers, laptops, printers, Bose, or Jabra headsets, headphones or earphones, Bose boom boxes, wireless Bose speakers, wireless remote outlets, Nikon cameras, GoPro Hero cameras, SIM cards, portable chargers or charging docks. Second, the make, model numbers, and government tag numbers for all kitchen equipment, including but not limited to stove burners and coolers in the Office of the Governor. And lastly, the make, model numbers, and government tag numbers for any, an all-gun rifle or other firearms or weapon cases in the Office of the Governor. Ms. Rosario, do you recall receiving this request?
我不知道
I don't know.
Okay, next one. On August 21st, or on August 2020, correction, you provided the Special Committee investigating the fiscal expenditures of the Governor with an inventory list of the Office of the Governor. Do you recall that?
One moment.
One moment.
女士，请重复一下问题
Yes.
Can you repeat that question again?
On August 2021, you provided the Special Committee investigating the fiscal expenditures of the Governor with an inventory list of the Office of the Governor. Do you recall that?
是的
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. Now you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize Representative Tina Sablon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, Ms. Rosario and counsel. Welcome. If I could please ask our staff to put up the letter from Ms. Rosario dated August 21, 2020, and this should be entered as Exhibit 18.
Madam Chair, can we get a copy of that document, please?
I believe it's in front of the witness.
What was the letter? What was the date of the letter?
August 21, 2020. Yes.
Was that August 21st?
August 21, 2020.
Because all we have are a bunch of documents, so they're not separated out. I don't know which documents you're referring to.
They would be... Can we have a quick recess, please?
Short recess.
Letter dated August 21, 2020.
是Sablon
Into the microphone, please.
Can that be translated into Chamor what Representative Sablon just said?
Short recess. Sure, recess. recess, and Representative Tina Sablon still has the floor. May I ask you to repeat your question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, Ms. Rosario, uh, on August 21st, 2020, you submitted a letter and initial inventory list attached to that letter dated August 21st, 2020.
I will now recognize the interpreter to translate, uh, that to the witness.
Ms. Rosario, on August 21st, 2020, you submitted a letter. On Ms. Rosario, gi Augustu, um, venti uno, 2020, un, uh, un submityala mikata, ni lista ni inventory.
The letter was addressed to the Chairman of the Special Committee investigating.
Ikata ma, ma address kata gi chair to the, i Special Committee.
Uh, that was investigating the fiscal expenditures of the governor.
Ni momi setika i fiscal expenditure, um, gi ala mi gubernano.
Counsel, could we please, uh, go down to the signature on this page? Ms. Rosario, is this your signature on the document?
Ms. Rosario, fin mmoi no gi dokumento? Ungan. Yes.
And would you please confirm that this is a true and correct copy of the document you submitted?
De cos senor confirm na guizen no i dinanti zan no, na dokumento. Un ratuta. Oh, hold on a minute. Ungan. Yes.
Thank you. And then on August 25th, 2020, you submitted another letter.
Pues gi Augustu venti cinco, 2020, un no, no alum talu otro na kata.
With an additional inventory list.
Uh, za guamos nuo, ga gi gi lista.
And indicated that you had, quote, inadvertently failed to include this additional inventory in your transmittal letter of August 21st, 2020.
Uh, you got a, you get that.
And indicated that you had inadvertently failed to include.
Za, uh, annuk na, tiun, tiun no alum todo du.
Uh, this, this additional inventory.
Is the additional na inventory?
In your transmittal letter of August 21st, 2020.
Gi edzino kata ni no alum, uh, gi August 21st, 2020.
Madam Chair, I'd like to enter this 20, August 25th, 2020, letter as Exhibit 19.
Madam Chair, be, no, no alum, estina, uh, exhibit letter dated August 25th, 2020, as what?
Uh, Exhibit 19.
Uh, como Exhibit 19.
Uh, Ms. Rosario, is this your signature on the document? Counsel, could we please go down to this issue?
Ms. Rosario, noan moi no gi, ni gage? Yes.
Thank you. And would you please confirm that this is a true and correct copy of the document you submitted?
De cos senor confirm na guizesti dinanti na dokumento ni no alum.
Including the additional inventory that was attached.
Kontori zi inventory na lista ni, ni un atat kata. Yes.
Thank you. And just going back to the August 21st, 2020, letter.
Pues ta, biray takti gi August 21st, 2020, na kata.
Ms. Rosario, you stated in this letter of August 21st, 2020.
Un ratuta. Un ratuta. Wait a minute. Madam, uh, Chair, uh, bauta. Nu senor bai kurihii edzi i, i finais esenyas si representantin nuo Kamatsu. Ane mama isinko u hasu murisi bisin na kata. I, August nuo, i Augustu dia seti, uh, dos mil venti. Za i inepeku takti lekuti utungo, nu lazi zuniazu, ungan hutunga, purisin na kata. Madam Chair, can I recall? Can I recall the questions of Representative Kamacho when he inquired if I had, um, I'm sorry, I lost you, um. Oh, u hasu. If I remember. Purizi i katan i Augustu dia seti, dos mil venti. Of August 27, 2020. August, Augustu dia seti. Oh, August 7, 2020. Ah. Za i inepeku takti elekuti utungo. And my reply was, I said, I didn't know. Bai kurihii eno, sa ungan hutunga, puri nona kata. But I will correct that now because I do know about that letter.
Noted. You may proceed, Representative Sablon.
Uh, I, I think the question for you, Ms. Rosario, for, for this, um, this part of the questioning was, would you please confirm that, uh, that this is a true and correct copy of the document that you submitted, including the additional inventory?
I question, uh, i, um, question no para augums, Rosario, um, nu, yes, uh, ko, guizesti i, the true and correct copy is, is not. Ko guizesti i dinanti na kopia ni un no alum, what date?
August 25th, 2020.
Gi August 25th, 1920, I mean, 2020.
Objection, Madam Chair. The translation should have been true and correct, magahit zan dinanti.
Do you know that? Please, may the witness answer, answer the question.
Ungan. Yes.
Thank you. And in your letter of August 21st, 2020.
Pues gi katan mu gi, ni ma date, uh, August 21st, 2020.
You stated that, that the information provided.
Na idina informationin un alu.
Was compiled after a diligent and reasonable search.
Uh, ma togi, as, ano, gi, uh, uh, dinanti, i, um, un togi todo du.
Excuse me.
Uh, to.
Excuse me. For better clarity, I will, uh, ask Representative Sablon to ask the question fully in English without breaking it up.
Okay.
And then after that, we will have the interpreter, uh, break it up as needed.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, Ms. Kirby, you could just interrupt me to pause, if that's okay? Is that what you're asking, Madam Chair?
I would like for you to ask the question in English completely, and then a second time would be to break it up for the interpreter.
Uh, so, Ms. Rosario, you stated in your letter of August 21st, 2020, that the information was compiled after a diligent and reasonable search and inventory of the office of the governor. This inventory includes the offices of the governor himself, staff, and the offices of his close advisors and staff, including the Chief of Staff, the Special Assistant for Administration, the Special Assistant for Legislative Review, his Senior Policy Advisor, the Legal Counsel, the Press Secretary, and his Policy Analysts. So this, I'm reading from, from the letter of August 21st, 2020. You also stated that the Office of the Governor conducted a, quote, "full inventory of the offices" and went above and beyond what was requested by the Special Committee. That's on the next page. You stated that you were doing this because, quote, "conducting full inventories of government office is a necessary practice of effective government administration and as an act of transparency for the Special Committee." So the question, Ms. Rosario, is, did you write these letters of August 21st and 25th, 2020?
Do you need it translated?
Ungan.
Is it because you don't understand English, or what, Representative Sablon?
Masu komprende, gi finot tomorrow. I understand it better in tomorrow.
Senora, uh, can I have Representative Sablon at this time break it up in phrases so that the interpreter can properly translate?
Sure. And, um, perhaps for the interpreter's ease, she could also refer to the, the language that's, um, on the monitor, uh, since I'm just reading from the letter.
I'm sorry, I can't see that far.
We can provide her with the letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which one? Yeah, okay. Okay. Um, but the question is, did you write these letters of August 21st and 25th, 2020?
Uh, i questiona gi ni ko, nu untugi, augun nu tumogisin na kata, gi, uh, ni ma date, August 21st, 2020.
And 25th.
And Dani 25th. Yes. Yes.
Thank you. And did you understand the letters that you signed?
Don komprende, kata seno nono. Ungan. Yes.
And did you prepare the inventory list?
Za agupun paray inventory list. I empleao. An employee. I empleao.
Yeah, objection, yeah. She said the employees, not the employee.
Thank you, Counsel. You just promoted me to a. Noted. Your objection is noted.
And which employees prepared these inventory lists? Could you name them?
Za disin empleao ni, uh, pumipara inventory, cos senon sangani, un sangana odisia. Si, gi officinan, mommy, interamente todo, um. In entire office, altogether? Si Francis Delacruz, Lina Delacruz, Kiana Mangloña, Gil Bernbrick, Kevin Bautista, Victoria Guerrero, Ami Shai, zan loki si Adi Santos. And also Adi Santos.
And.
She's not done.
Oh, okay.
Zan loki itauto i medical referral as Ron Taisakan, zan Maria Takai. And also people from the medical referral, Ron Taisakan and Maria Takai. Zan i officinan i Guam Medical Referral, zan Honolulu. An Office of Guam Medical Referral in Honolulu.
And who from the Guam and Honolulu offices prepared these inventory lists?
Za hadigan in Guam, zan Honolulu nu pumipares isan inventory. Sa hadigan in Guam dan Honolulu no pumparis is an inventory.
Si Katrina Lisama, gi ni Honolulu Medical Referral.
Katrina Lisama from Honolulu Medical Referral.
Si John Concepcion gi Guam Medical Referral.
John Concepcion in Guam Medical Referral.
Are all, those all the employees who prepared these reports?
Ungan.
Yes.
Thank you. And did you experience any challenges in conducting this inventory of the Office of the Governor?
Don experience, I menaput gi, is this a name, listan inventory gi papa i Office of, uh, the Governor?
Ahit.
No.
Were you able to track down the make, model numbers, and government tag numbers for all electronic equipment, devices, or similar items as requested by the Special Committee?
Can you break that down, Representative Sablon?
Sure. Were you able to track down the make, model numbers, and government tag numbers?
Da sini on sada todu i, um, uh.
Make?
I, um, modelus ya, gi, uh, is this an? Go ahead.
Model numbers and government tag numbers?
I, um, model numbers, then i, i tag number, i ID ni, ni na, ini government.
For all electronic equipment?
Para todu electronic equipments.
Devices?
Office na makina.
Or similar items?
Para office na idikulan pareunu na klosin, uh, makinas ya.
As requested by the Special Committee?
Ni ma requesta ni Special Committee?
Uh, guaha, ungan todu du i mangai gi, ni gi inventory, guaha ha, todu man aanuka gi zi lista, ni u puvinizi i venti uno na legislaturas, za ni kopia ni ingegeti pongo.
Oh, yes, there are, um, they are in the list that I have submitted, um, that I have submitted with the complete inventory, uh, listing of, uh, oh, what was, um.
Can I ask the witness to please, uh, go by first?
Okay. Mangai giha todu du, adus siha i, pogwa sasangan si rep no Sablon.
There's some, there are all there, in there, of what you just mentioned, Rep Sablon.
Guaha ha, edzi todui guaha, numiru ni man matag mangai giha todu.
Uh, there are those that are all tagged. Uh, the numbers are all there.
Guaha lokui edzi i toda, logai giha ikosas.
Uh, there are some where they are not, um, numbered, but the things are there.
Thank you. And were you able to track down the make, model numbers, and government tag numbers for all kitchen equipment as requested by the Special Committee?
Da sini on, uh, were you able to what?
Track down the make, model numbers, and government tag numbers for all kitchen equipment?
Da, da on sada lokui i, um, todu du i model numbers, the make, dan officea gi, uh, bandan kitchen?
Kitchen equipment, yes.
Oh, gi, gi bandan i, uh, officea gi kusina?
A- as requested by the Special Committee?
Ni ginagagoni special.
Ha edzi i mangai gi, guaha edzi manaiwi.
There are some that are there, and some are not there.
Tat kumu.
Such as?
Esti zi legna stove burners.
Oh, such as, uh, what it says, uh, stove burners?
I coolers, mangai giha, gi officina todu.
The coolers are all there at the office, altogether.
Thank you. And were you able to track down the model, the make, model numbers, and government tag numbers for all gun, rifle, or other firearm or weapon cases?
De ko on sada lokui todu du i model make, uh, guns?
Uh, and government tag numbers for all guns?
Uh, da no i, uh, tag number i government, gi pakis ya?
Rifle or other firearm or weapon cases?
Rifle, para office na, um, rifle and what?
Uh, weapon cases, the case for the gun.
Oh, rifle, za ni casei pakis ya?
As requested by the Special Committee?
Ni ginagagoni Special Committee?
Tiu puvinizi eno gi listako, sa taigu eno shana kosa si gi officinan gubernu.
I did not provide those in my list, because those things are not, um, at the Governor's Office, in the Governor's Office.
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. And did you review the inventory list to ensure its completeness and accuracy before you submitted it to the Special Committee?
Za ko on renew, I mean, review, na dinanti todu du zi, uh, antistina alum mi lista gi, uh, gat gi Special Committee? Complete zan dinanti?
Edza tiningo u i hafa u puvinizi hamzu i hutunga gaigi, loti hutunga hafa, ko guaha kopia midzu o i legislatura, hago gotti na kopia ni tiparehu za ni kopiahu.
All I know is, uh, what I have and have provided you, uh, but I don't know what other you may have. Uh, of a jutimo, deko?
Na tiutungu hafa na kopia, mago gotti.
What copies you have, I don't know what copies you have that you're holding.
Ni tipu marehu za ni kopiahu.
That is not the same as my copy.
Ni hafa u puvinizi edzuha u testiguguzi.
From what I, uh, I have provided you, that is all I'm testifying to.
Understood. Uh, but the question is, did you review the, the inventory list to ensure that it's complete and accurate before you submitted it to the Special Committee?
O komprendilo, i questionu gi ni no ko on renew i dokumentu na gujesti complete zan dinanti antistina alum gi reviin Committee?
Ungan.
Yes.
Thank you. And is it your testimony then that the list that you submitted of the items in the Office of the Governor's inventory is accurate and complete?
Pisi zoma testimony na i gujestisana kosa senu na alum gi yu zoma inventory gujesti complete zan dinanti?
I hafa u puvinizi, u, u puvinizi maki i legislaturas ungan huatan ta'lu takti zonalista za kinimprende ko na todui hafa unoi edzuha nu i tiningo u za nu komprende gaigi u, u submitigi za hamzu sa tiutungu hafa mas na kopia in, pa dokumentu ingegeti.
Um, yes, according to what I have provided you is what I know to be true and accurate. Um, but I don't know what you have that, uh, may not, uh, that you is not aware of.
Thank you. I, my question is only about the list that you submitted. Um, and other than the stove top burners and the rifle cases that you mentioned earlier, were there any other items that you found were not in the Governor's inventory, uh, when you were doing the search?
Can you repeat your question, Rep Sablon, but break it down for the interpreter?
Other than the stove top burners and the rifle cases that you mentioned, Ms. Rosario?
Okay, faira di, is thi stove burner zen, uh, zani pakis ya ni un menciona?
Were there any other items, uh, requested by the Special Committee?
Ko ga otisana kosa seni, uh, ginagagoni Special Committee?
That were not in the inventory when you conducted the search?
Ni man, uh, manaiwi gi inventory list ani un submiti alun?
To du mangai gi.
Everything is there, except?
I Jabra headsets, I BOSS boom boxes, I wireless BOSS speakers, wireless remote outlets, Nikon cameras, SIM card, and portable chargers.
May we just clarify, those other items that you listed, Jabra headset, BOSS boombox, wireless BOSS speakers, Nikon cameras, SIM cards, portable chargers, those items are also not in the Governor's inventory?
To du di, eh, oh, you have to tell me again all those things. To du di ya menciona, uh, no, um, manaiwi gi Governor's, uh, inventory list?
Manaiwi stisha na kosa exista monodzan u, u sangan?
Uh, the, these things are not there, the things that I already had mentioned.
Loti kumekelegna lokui na nu nisisorioha na ufan matag.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that they are needed to be tagged.
Thank you. Uh, I think Representative Tina Sablon's question was to simply repeat your answer as to which ones are not on the list, where she, she did not ask for any further information, whether they were needed to be tagged or not.
Lo ifina ise senya si, uh, Rep Sablon ne, ilen, uh, mama ma si?
But Rep Sablon's question, she is asking?
Ko mangai gi todu du istina kosa i u intrega maki gi ma, gi Augusto dia venti uno dosmit venti?
If all the things that I had presented here, uh, on August, uh, 25th?
21st. 21st.
21st, 2020.
Para una keke klaru na guaha na kosa ti nisisorio ufan matag.
And to clarify, that there are some things are not necessary to be tagged.
Okay. And, uh, I'm sorry, she's not done. Oh, I'm sorry.
O sino.
Or?
O sino ti nisisorio na ufan alum gi inventory.
Or is not necessary for them to be included in the inventory?
And but just so we're clear, they, were they in the Governor's Office, those items that you mentioned?
Loti ta'na klaru ko mangai gi sisa na kosa skialu mi ofisana ni gubernu, sisa i un menciona? Tiutungu.
I don't know.
Did you look for those items as requested by the Special Committee?
Ko on, uh, on checkistisha ni ma, ma requesta ni Special Committee?
Objection. I think the question was, did you look for these?
did you look for these items and did you check for these items?
If you check this, the special committee? Are you... No.
And why not?
So far? Because I trust that the employees that do this inventory list that the things are there, included.
Okay. So, you relied on the employees to go and look for these items that were on the list. Is that correct?
Because I believe that...
Can you repeat your question, Rep Sablon?
So, you relied on the employees in the office of the governor to look for the items that were on the list requested by the special committee?
Because I believe that... that the inventory list... that the inventory list is not included by the special committee? Or is the list included? Ungan.
Yes.
Okay. But as far as you know then, you stated that the Jabra headsets, the Bose boom boxes, wireless Bose speakers, wireless remote outlets, Nikon cameras, portable chargers, and SIM cards were not included in the inventory reports. Is that correct?
Can you break it down, Rep Sablon?
You stated, Ms. Rosario, that...
I don't know, Ms. Rosario.
That the Jabra headsets, Bose boom boxes, wireless Bose speakers, wireless remote outlets, Nikon cameras, SIM cards, and portable chargers were not included in the inventory reports.
I don't know. They are included in the inventory report.
Is that correct?
According to... All of this that I had mentioned before that are not on the list are not there. They're not there.
Not in the governor's office?
No, the governor's office is not included. I am not sure. I'm not clear if these things are there in the governor's office.
Okay. So, you don't know then if the inventory list that you submitted is complete?
Objection. That's been asked and answered twice.
Objection is duly noted. The witness may answer.
I don't know.
Okay. And earlier you stated, Ms. Rosario, that these procurement ID numbers are not always necessary. Could you explain that?
A threshold? Because I don't know. I'm sorry, Tina. What was that?
That the numbers are not always necessary.
And could you explain that, please? Because I don't know. It depends on what is considered threshold under the procurement? Regulation or the... I don't know. Under procurement regulation? And nothing? Or I don't know? I don't know. I don't know the threshold right now. And I don't know under the threshold right now.
You don't know the threshold for the procurement ID numbers right now? Is that...
I don't memorize it.
Okay. I yield at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have a few clarifying questions and I will not be needing an interpreter for my questions. Earlier you mentioned that there were... Some items did not need tags but are there at the office, if I heard you correctly. Do you know which ones those are?
Can you repeat that?
Can you repeat that?
Earlier you mentioned that in Representatives...
Madam Chair, can you repeat that?
Most certainly. Earlier, we mentioned that there are items that need tagging by procurement and supply. Do you know?
Ungan.
Do you know which articles do not need tagging by the procurement and supply?
There are items that are not included by typewriter or by telephone for employees to use. And cell phones, like, are not included in those items. They are not needed for tagging. But I remember earlier that there is a threshold that you memorized.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that the witness indicated that there are items that do not need tagging. She doesn't remember the threshold, the dollar amount. Is that correct?
Ungan.
The dollar amount of that threshold to be tagged by procurement and supply. She also listed a few items, like typewriters and cell phones that do not need to be tagged or are not necessarily tagged. Thank you. Next question. Have you ever seen the inventory list that you provided on August 21st, 2020 and August 25th, 2020 to the special committee? Have you ever seen any of those items on the inventory list from the governor's office, yourself personally?
Can you translate?
I won't need a translator. Is there an inventory that you submitted on August 21st, 2020 and August 25th, 2020? You submitted it by the special committee. And it is included in the inventory?
Ungan.
Yes. There are some that I've seen and some I haven't seen. There are some that I've seen and some I haven't seen. Is there an inventory that you submitted on August 21st and 25th, 2020? Is it included in the inventory? And is it included in the... in the... in the list?
Madam Chair, could we please know what list you're referring to? Because we don't see a list of an inventory list that we've been provided.
Chair recess.
Sure recess. To repeat the question?
Ungan.
Senora Rosario. Edzi i inventario nion submiti ki Agosto 21 zan Agosto 25, 2020 ki watagi Special Committee ko un testiguguzi poguna kabalis zan dinansi estinalista.
To do edzi eu pribenizi?
All of the ones that I have provided? I won't need a translator. Oh, okay. For the sake of other members though, they would want so, thank you. Go ahead, please, Mr. Rosario.
Una ufa faesinko to do do sa zangin to do do ne debidibe atan ikopiaw edzi eu u submiti mogi gi legislature zan edzi ikopian midu.
Ayu ufa faesino apod edzi i, I'm sorry, translator?
Uh, the reason why I'm asking is because uh all the ones that I have submitted and uh the ones submitted to you.
Can you repeat, uh, Ms. Rosario?
Ufa faesino ko to do do igwaha na inventorio edzi malistan eu pribenizi hamzu mogi?
I'm asking you, um, if uh uh, you are inquiring about all the the listing that I have provided you.
Sa unisita be atans abekompara ilistaku ni unoi hamzu mogi zan ilistan midu.
Because I need to um look and compare with the list that I have and your list, with your list.
Objection, I think what she said was, I need to compare the list that I submitted to you with the list that you have now provided me this morning.
Objection noted, counsel. And I beg to differ with the translation you just provided. Will the witness please provide an answer? I'm only asking about the August 21st and August 25th, 2020 inventory lists. Nothing more.
Twenty first, twenty first or twenty fifth?
August 21st and 25th, so yeah, August 25th.
Uh.
Esti gi.
Right.
Pues si August 25th.
Twenty first.
Look, twenty first, ne? To go to state and provide.
Right.
Pues. Unisita abekompara ko dinansi estinalista zan itzinu ko noru. Za ufa faesino ko kabalis zan dinansi estinalista leterbe zan de li.
Eni lispania ne? Bisangoli na tesinya mo.
Tesinya uhu taku kompara.
Tisinya u opino no kabalis sa necesita be kompara ilistaku zan ilistan midu. Ni ma pribenizizu poguna ogan.
I cannot, um. I cannot compare my list and your list uh which is being provided to me this morning.
Objection, what the witness said was, I cannot answer that question until I've had an opportunity to compare the list that I submitted to you previously and what you have provided to me this morning.
Duly noted, um, just for the record, we have not, oh, the, the list you have, okay, thank you. Uh, I will move on with another question. You mentioned earlier that the stove burners and coolers are at the office. Do you know which office they are located at?
Objection, that's mischaracterizing the witness's testimony. What she testified was the coolers were at the office, but they did not have any stove burners.
Okay, I stand corrected. Um, same question, where are the coolers? Which office are they at? We just need the name of one office.
Mangaiya gi officina, gi gi kusina na banda, gi office of the governor.
Um, they are there at the office, um, at the kitchen, at the office of the governor.
Uh, dos. Um, na dos na white cooler, uno na white igloo, one sixty-five liter cooler.
Uh, the, there are two coolers, one white igloo, um.
One sixty-five.
One sixty-five na cooler, hmm?
Tres na white igloo, one uh typographical, here it's supposed to be one sixty-five liter cooler, tres.
Uh, three white uh coolers which has a typographical, a typographical uh uh air on, uh, id, zonja id?
E liter.
Eh, um, the liter, three white ones.
Zan uno na white igloo cooler.
And one white igloo cooler.
The last item, white igloo cooler, do you know how many quarts or liters it is?
Ay, magai kiu tuu.
No, not really, I don't know.
Thank you. Uh, my last question before we take a break for lunch is, um, you mentioned earlier that it is not necessary to, for, for items to be included in the inventory. Uh, why, why is that? You mentioned earlier that some items are in the inventory and other items do not need to be in the inventory? Why, why is that?
Senon faesinzu gi finot tomorrow?
Senora. Un menshona, uh, la taf taf na gasha na artikulu tenisori no fanma pegagi inventorio. Ko senon explico jam sa put hafa na tenisori no ma pegagi inventorio.
Adzus. Adzusiana kosas ne komekelaku i tot como, um, selectric typewriter, um, gaiga enogi gi officina, tenisori ben inventorio za malaguzuloki na benakoruna megai na kosas nu inirensa ginini manmapus na administracion ni zikomekerekuti tenisori no fanmatulaka. Pues enosana kosas iban ta'za zonjani nu tak komekelagnana puru enosha inirensa ginini previous na administracion gobenno mentusia.
Let the record reflect that the witness has stated that uh, items that are not tagged, that are in the offices, current offices of the office of the governor and other programs um, are inherited from previous administrations, therefore they would not need to be included in the inventory. Um, at this time, I will call for a lunch break, um, uh. Up until, we will be on break until 1:30. Uh, we ask the witness to please return at that time. Thank you. Recession, recess.
Se gunitin omo i edzi antistu ini un replace kogwani anoi gobenno listasani puru fan? Kiutu ngu?
I don't know.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the office that you know of give him lists of items to purchase when he goes off island?
Kogwahamas galu no officina nu manoi anoi lista nipuro fan angino mono mo falan? Kiutu ngu?
I don't know.
With, with the governor does go off island and goes shopping for things for the office, um. Can you explain how his purchases should be processed for inventory, please?
When the governor goes island, what?
Yeah, sorry, let me repeat that. When the governor goes off island and goes shopping, does shopping for the office?
Zangino gobenno mono umo falan, za mono shumapping. Go ahead.
Would you explain how his purchases should be processed for inventory?
Ko senon explico di ofa tamano i uh um, ifinonya ma puruma process para puruma inventory? ma puro ma process para puro ma inventory?
Ungan? Yes?
Okay, thank you. Um, so, how, how, how does he, how is this process for inventory? The items that he buys for the office, how is this processed for inventory?
Pusi sisanakosas ni, uh, fawn ofa tamano matuganya ni puro ma process para puro ma inventory? Sempre ne ma oga ni toto procurement and supply puro ma tag para i inventory?
Oh, they will call people at procurement and supply to, uh, tag and have it inventory?
Thank you. Um, when the, when the governor requests reimbursements for purchases for the office?
Zanginu gobetnu no make, uh, reimbursement?
Yeah, when, yeah, when he, when he requests reimbursements?
Mangaga reimbursement?
For items he purchases for the office, do you review those requests? Do those requests go to you?
Para sisanakosas ni, uh, uh, fawn para oficina ko un, un review sisanah, nah, cosas?
Aye. No.
Thank you. Um, if not, you, do you know who does?
Pus tanginti hogo ko untungodi? Kiutungu klaro eno?
I'm not clearly sure who is.
So, do you know anyone at all that verifies the items that the governor purchases for the office? If these are actually made part of the in, inventory for the office?
Pus ko guaha tingomo, ko guaha masnuo tingomo, adinoo?
I'm sorry, the second part of your question?
Uh, let me just repeat it, sorry.
Representative Probst, can I ask you to ask your question one at a time?
One at a time, sure.
That was a compounded question.
Okay. Does anyone verify the items the governor purchases for the office are, are actually made uh, part of the inventory?
Does anyone make?
Does anyone verify that the items the governor purchases?
On ko guaha nu vumerify sisanakosas ni gobetnu afan? Go ahead.
Are, are actually made part of the inventory for the office?
Pad ano alu nu siguru napo, napatin i inventory? Kiutungu?
I don't know.
Have you ever seen the governor request reimbursement for an item for the office that was not received and processed for inventory?
Ko guaha nun li i gobetnu no, um, adisibit reimbursement?
Representative Probst, can you repeat your question?
Sure, certainly.
And please break it down.
Okay, let me try to, um, have you seen the governor, or have you ever seen the governor request reimbursement?
Ko guani li i gobetnu man requesting reimbursement?
For an item for the office?
Para kosa si oficina?
That was not received?
Ni timare sibi?
And processed for inventory?
Ni puro ma process para inventory? Kiutungu?
I don't know.
Who is authorized to purchase items for the office of the governor?
Adi maturisa puro faman cosas para i oficina ni gobetnu? I empleao nu mo foma tutu i gobetnu direktamente?
The employee that works for the governor directly.
And who would that be?
Da, disney?
Si Francis Dela Cruz?
Francis Dela Cruz?
Is, is that it, or anyone else? Just?
Guzihapagat almost. Eno hati ningo?
She's the only one I know.
Thank you. Have you ever asked a non-employee to purchase any items for the office of the governor? Let me just repeat that one more time.
I, I can hear.
You got it?
Okay. Ko guani ma maesino otu feradi empleao na puro faman ofa para oficina ni gobetnu? Taza.
Nothing, never.
Has anyone else from the office of the governor ever asked a non-employee to purchase items for the office that you know of?
Ko gua otu masin ni ti empleao i gobetnu nu mafasin puro faman ofa para kosa, uh, kosa si, uh, oficina ni gobetnu ni segunitin ngo'umu? Taza tinongo uno eno?
I don't know, eh, um, anything about this, or anyone about this.
Um, thank you, Mr. Rosario. Uh, Chair, I yield at this time.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize Representative Richard Lizama.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Dokrana sijas masi pinatumpago nu, um, uh, Mrs. Rosario, zanizamu council. Um, welcome to the chamber, Mrs. Rosario and her, your council, Miss Lapuzo. Um, I'm going to be asking you another area, gi lost damage items and the processing of, of for surveying. We just be fayse lo gi official ma majulang na cosas? Tamano matugwena ipuncho gi i survey, so any man majulang i cosas. Comprendia? Is that okay with you, Chair, Chairwoman, if I do my translation? Is it okay? Thank you. Comprendia? Sijas masi. Ofa tamano ma process i, gi office gobetnu i di say i prontcho gi i capital items? Tamano un surveya jisya ko un lili, funikentusne? So, I'll say it in English, what is the process of the governor's office to have capital items surveyed?
I process? Sorry.
I process ni semprin nu filaudi di say i form ginini procurement and supply? Za semprin man mo, ma, man moto, ma as, ma ases i cosas?
Uh, the process is, uh, procurement and supply will come and attest for the stuff.
You may continue.
Pues edigi semprin e ma indica gi dokumentu ni procurement and supply?
And that's when they will indicate, um, on, in document, uh, to document it in procurement and supply?
Ko sumeset biha, pati sumeset biesta?
If it's still usable or no, no longer usable?
Sijas masi, thank you.
Esta.
Roughly, how many capital items are surveyed every year at the governor's office? Na izu nu, funikentu nu gizomunu calculation, kontu na capital items man majuvevea kada sakang gi gobetnu, gi, 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 officer magalahi?
Ga imina kareno para be opi nu gi numero sa?
It's hard for me. It's hard, it's hard for me to answer in terms of numbers.
Sa nuewa, neu irensya istina posisyon ani mano izu, tarabea po'gu para dosa onyu si media?
Uh, because I was new into this position, uh, just going on two and a half years.
Pues dispesa na i di ma apunta zu ti otman na tempo ki dos mil venti umolu mi pandemic?
Uh, and shortly after I was appointed, uh, not too long, the pandemic came around.
Tu mazaha ni ofa fa na actividad?
Yes. And there was just no activities whatsoever?
Pustiu tungu, kontu ti sinio no yo nenona numero?
So, I don't know how many, how much, I cannot give you that kind of, uh, a number?
Sa guaha man mo fona ki gua ho?
Cause there were others before me.
So during your time, can you remember any, oh, how many times during the year have you done one or two? Gi, gi, durante timpon mu, gi un onyu? Ko, sinio sa onyu, kontu bay nu li i survey, i survey kontu bay nu zogi gi uno, un, uno onyu na mam, na momento? Can you translate it?
So during your time, your short time, uh, do you know how many? Or can you, um, tell how many you have done?
Sinia be oluk na ene i otu or des grono puro stishai zi air conditioner ni man haga gas gi oficina?
I would say that about eight, um, to otu, or what?
Otu or des?
Um, eight to ten, uh, units of, of air conditioners?
Zan gasha typewriters ni dzisha timan sumitbi?
And there are typewriters that are no longer usable?
Kontodo computers loket?
Including computers.
Have you ever done a survey on a camera?
Ko gua nu un surveya i, i camera gi timpon mu?
Taza.
No.
Uh, the cooler?
I cooler tamano i uti, i testigo gi, gi, gi egan mangagaya i coolers lota tza usa survey coolers?
Um, the coolers, um, just like I said, I had said earlier this morning, the coolers are there, but I haven't surveyed the coolers.
Za ofi bos wireless na etset? Have you done a survey for that item? Bos, bos wireless etset?
Kiutungu?
I don't know.
Za, guanyu li un survey, or un survey i Dell laptops? Have you ever done or seen a Dell laptops and been surveyed by your office?
Aye, taza no li?
No, I have not seen it.
Za i zi i says, it has maluk chainsaw, that, how about chainsaws? Have you seen one?
Ni eno loket ju li?
Even that one, I haven't seen.
They just say maluk i wheelbarrow, guanyu li, have you seen a wheelbarrow been surveyed in your office?
Taza no li?
I have not seen it.
Pues, otu na question, yeah, another question.
And you've already brought it up. The air conditioners are listed on your inventory and they are still in your storage? Have they been surveyed or disposed of? I mean, ko estisha i, un po'lu gi listan izomu inventory? Estisha air conditioner mangaga gi egan nu storage? Ko istau un check ko problema, zan esito umajuti?
Sinio sa oni zu afana lista nu una atat?
Uli, kini gi lista i air conditioner, uno sa ona gitutuna oneshon to togi loket?
Ungan?
Pues, afana rason na mangaga gi egan nu storage? What was the reason that you still have them in the storage? Have they been surveyed and they are ready for dispose?
Representative Lizama? Sinia ca mula lalu on indica mon, monu guini nu na lista? Salamegay sinalista ni guaha nu air conditioner? So senyon natungzu monu ginino?
In general, anay, na mangagi, ginigi, um, po'lu gi listamune?
Okay.
Na mangagi ya gi storage, sijas asta faysinu costama survey, za ofana timan majuzuti? Anay, mangagi ya gi sanalo? What? Want me say it in English?
Um, what I was asking her is that she has them on a list? And why are they still in the storage and they have, have they been surveyed? And are they ready for to be disposed? Understand?
Representative, uh, Lizama? Estinalista i upriniziam zuni? Gasha ginina air conditioner, man cetzetuna gi wo gua izi man nuebu? Pustodo ne izi man majulang, semprin ha ben survey, sa parofadi para ben pepegaha gi oficina gi anestatisi ya sumitbi? No? Pustisi ya be oluk?
Representative Lizama, um, there are, um, ones that are still in use and still on the wall. And those that, oh, I'm sorry, the second part.
Guaha ha izi nebu.
And there are some new ones. And being used.
Edusha man cetzetun gi wo, ti sinja be oluk na man ma survey to samana francis.
Of those that are still on the wall, I cannot say that those are being surveyed because it's still being used.
Okay, I understand that. But in your statement here, or rather, in your inventory was stated that you have them in the storage. However, if you do have them in the storage, those, for say, broken ones, how long have they been there? Should I go and do this in tomorrow? You understand, no? She understands.
Sinja ne un fa nu izu monu gini na lista, za ezu na besa ñu ko gagaya gi storage, pa estata igwi gi storage. Sa si azu na tempo ni una ña amzuni esti na lista, sinja ga igwi na ma indika na majulan za estapaꞌgu taigwi.
Pues, un answer. Thank you.
Sisu smase.
One more question. You understand?
Oh, she has to repeat in a shorter sentence.
Let me, let me just go ahead and do that, the translation. What she's saying that at the time when she submitted the list of inventory, they may be in the stores, but at this present time, they may be already gone or disposed. Is that what you said?
Hanga.
Yes.
So my next question, and final one. Kon ki kipa i rekot mu ofasha un sovea, did you say capital items? Have you, do you have a record of the survey capital items? Kon ki kipa i rekot mu ofasha un sovea, did you say capital items?
Hanga, ga genona dokumentu gi ofisina.
Yes, that document is in the office.
So if I ask you, would you please provide the committee with a record of all items surveyed in the last three years? If I ask you? Ko sinja, pu fa bo un provideam ni komunitat ni komiri, i zo mu rekun i todu she na cosas i un sovea gi ofana na cosas gi man ma pus tres ñu na sakkan.
Sinja be ña ña ke anu tutun tempo ku.
I can give it to you when I first, when I started.
Ane mu espi shar na azu dante ni administracion zu, lo ti sinjau ña ña zun tres ñu smalufan.
When I was the assistant to the administration, but I cannot give you the past three years.
That concludes my questions. Are you back? Thank you. Chairwoman, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Lizama. This time, I'd like to recognize Representative Tina Sablon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome back, Mr. Rosario and counsel. Could I just clarify very quickly? Is there any record of surveyed items prior to when you became the Special Assistant for Administration?
Are there prior items surveyed before she became?
Is there a record of the surveyed capital items from before she was, became the SA?
Ko gua nu survey capital items, sentestu nu nu omalo na gi posijanmu.
I don't know.
Thank you. And could I also clarify? Are you the person that is primarily responsible for maintaining the inventory of the governor's office?
Hanga.
Yes.
So if you are not the one that is verifying whether these items that the governor purchases are actually added to the inventory, then does that mean there is no one that is verifying?
Can you repeat your question and break it down, please, Miss Representative Sablon?
If, earlier, Ms. Rosario, you stated that you do not verify that the items that the governor purchases for the office.
Break it down.
Earlier, Ms. Rosario stated that the items that the governor purchases for the office, that she's not the one that verifies that these items are actually added to the inventory.
Um, yeah. Earlier.
Earlier?
You, she said?
Yes, earlier, Ms. Rosario, you stated.
Oh, unso ña na. Oh, go ahead.
That you are not the one
Na tiho gu.
That verifies that the items that the governor purchases for the office.
Tiho gu bu me verified desana cosas ni i gubernu afan para i office.
Are actually made part of the office inventory. Correct?
Za para uma na danya, kumu unu na dokumentu gi under i inventory services, denantisti.
Sinjau repeatita lu i question.
Can you repeat that question again?
Is it correct to say that you are not the one that verifies that the items that the governor purchases are actually made part of the inventory for the office?
Can you break it down, please?
Okay, we'll go back to the question that was asked earlier. Ms. Rosario, do you verify that the governor, that the items that the governor purchases for the office are actually made part of the office inventory?
Ms. Rosario, ko, I'm sorry, Tina, you said earlier, is that what you said?
No, the question is, are you the one, Ms. Rosario? Are you the one that verifies that the items that the governor purchases for the office are actually made part of this inventory for the office?
Ko o gunu bu me verify i cosas ya ni gubernu afan za domanya alun gi edesena cosas ni ma inventory?
Ane ma faixin zu gi 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 agan, yes, Rep Sablon, na ko u ve verify, ko u talu nu ma atan i ofa nu finahanya xa i gubernu ileku ahhi.
When I was asked earlier this morning by Representative Sablon if I was the one that verify the governor's purchase? Or? I said, no.
Okay. So then my question now is, if you are the one that is responsible for the inventory at the office.
Pues, izuku question paꞌgu le nu nu ililekudan gen ogu. Responsibidad ni poru verify. Verify what?
For maintaining the inventory.
Oh, ni poru uma maintain i cosas gi ofisina ni gubernu.
But you are not the one that is verifying that when the governor goes shopping and buys these things for the office, that they are actually added to the inventory? If that's not you, then does that mean that there is nobody that does that verification right now?
Pues, ilanguna, I mean, tiho gu, bu verify ofa i gubernu afan, ni poru mana danya alun gi inventory services, pues nu tada ha nu bu nu poru tada ha bu verify i fina ansian i i gubernu atog.
I must object, Chair. That's not exactly the question that was, the question that was asked was not correctly translated.
Sure, recess. Back from recess. At this time, Representative Tina Sablon still had the floor, and I will try to translate for her.
Okay, let's try this again. Okay, so, Ms. Rosario, you are in charge of inventory, correct?
Hanga.
You don't need to.
Well, I think just for the viewing.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yes.
Thank you. And then the second part of this. But when the governor goes shopping for the office, you do not verify that these items that he purchases are recorded as inventory, correct?
Za genu mano mama ni gubernu cosas para i ofisina, ko di denanti na tiho gu, uma preba stisha na na finahan.
I'm sorry, correction. Did she ask ilanguna ko ho gu mu preba estisha na finahan? Or is it approving what the governor buys goes on an inventory list? That's two different things.
Can you repeat your question?
The question is whether or not Ms. Rosario is the person who verifies that the items that the governor buys are actually recorded as inventory?
I question ya, see Representative Sablon, ko see Ms. Rosario, I'm sorry, Tina.
Is she the person who verifies? Is she the person who verifies?
Kohogu ma prereba.
That the items that the governor buys for the office are added to inventory?
Yatiklu sean ya fafan i gubetnu, kohogu ma prereba poro ma, na hallum gi listani inventore.
Ungan?
Dispensa ungan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So she is the person who verifies, um.
Um, tiennegi ileku na uve- verify. Ilis, i ofaha fahon i gubetnu. Sa tada, distiki matu otuzu gi gobetnametu, tada neutumu na ma ve- verify, hafa fina hohanya i gubetnu. Pues tiennegi ileku na uve- verify. Na ileknya, na manafa ko poti edzu humoholum gi inventorio nagista.
Can we back up a minute so we can translate? I'm sorry, can you?
That's not, that's not what I said. Um, that, um, I am, uh, uh, I am not the one that verify. I did not say I am the one that verifies, uh, of that.
Hafa fina hohanya i gubetnu.
What the governor buys?
Okay. Is there more?
Edzi i ofaha fahon za humolunggi inventorio. Edzigi, ilileknya si Tina ko humoholum, i ofafa fina honya i gubetnu. Zangen munadzan u verify lo ahhi ti guo ma mve- verify. Tiutumu hodi ma mve- verify. Za beripiti ta lo. Hafa fino'u na disti tempo na matu otuzu gi gobetnametu. Tada neutumu i gubetnu ma verify hafa siha fina hohanya.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm, it, it, she, Keiko, you have to repeat. In shorter sentence, okay?
Okay. Ikinimprende ku, ni question, i questionya, si Rep Sablon, za dispensa, uh, dispensa Rep Sablon sa earlier leku Tina dispensa.
Mm-hmm, um, ac- according to what I understand from your line of questioning, uh, Representative Sablon, and excuse me, uh, because earlier I said Tina, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
U tumistiti gozu po'go sa ifinaisenya ileknya, i ileknya.
I am testifying now because your line of questioning or your questioning is?
Nagie eggaan, antis di tafan hono man lunch.
That this morning before we go for lunch?
Ma maisin si Rep Sablon ko guahu mu riviviu pat bu me- verify i hafa afahon i gubetnu.
Um, you, Rep Sablon have asked if it was me that verifies, uh, what the governor buys?
Za ileku ahhi.
And I said no.
Pues ma maisin ko edzu siha i afahon, ko poti edzu gi inventorio.
And then she asked that those that, uh, things that he had purchased, if they were part of the inventory?
Zangen ma fahon za humolunai gi inventorio ai lista. Za ga- sa gaigi sempit enno ni i ofafa fina honya i gubetnu para yofisina, then sempia gaigi gi inventorio.
If whatever he had purchased, uh, is being entered as part of the office, then it will be part of the inventory?
Okay. Thank you.
Pues, sa un faisinzo, um, your translator faisinzo pa be repeating. Poti gi u repeat lo que.
The translator asked me to repeat part of what I also said.
Ileku na disti tempo.
I also said that since, ever since.
Ni matu otuzu gi gobetnametu.
Since I work for, for the government.
Tada neutumu gubetnu ma verify hafa siha fina hohanya.
Uh, I've not known of any governor's purchase that has been verified.
Okay. Okay, so, to wrap up this line of questioning, there may be nobody in the office of the governor actually verifying his purchases. Is that correct?
Pues si ultimo, si netasangan na tada gi olun om of- ofisi governor no bu me- verify ofa, um, fina honya.
Fina honya se? Did I assisti?
Ilekude na ti sonu enno na question.
I said that's not a clear question.
Sa, zangen na fahon ni i gubetnu, ma xahodzina gubetnu ofa fina honya para yofisina. Siempri u presenta, lo tada tiningo'u implio ma señala para o atana i gubetnu hafa fina hohanya.
Because whatever, whoever is the governor that purchased something for the office, uh, I have not known anyone that would verify whatever they purchase or everything that they purchase, things that they purchase.
Right. Verifying that the things are added or if they're not added, there's nobody doing that. That's how I understand.
Uh, you're, uh, objection, that's a mischaracterization of what the witness testified.
That there is nobody that is verifying right now?
Objection, that is not what she said.
Okay, so.
Can you repeat, uh, may the witness repeat her last portion of her, uh, answer?
And, and maybe speak into the mic, please, Ms. Rosario.
Ileku na tada tiningo'u nyodzinagubetnu no.
I said that I have not known of any governor.
Para uma pupulan ha hafa fina hohanya.
For, to be, um, babysat of
Maybe monitor.
His purchase or monitor of his purchases.
Okay. Okay. And for the, just to, I mean, not to belabor this point anymore than we already have, but I understand that. But the question is, is is there anybody right now that is doing any kind of verification that items purchased for the office are actually part of the inventory?
Oh, comprendi lo, lo, um, ko guaha, po'go, no, uh, verifying? Bu me- verify esti sean na finahan para uholum kumo patin i inventory. Guaha bu me- verify po'go esti sean na finahan?
And I think this could be just yes or no.
Tiutumu.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Let's, let's move on, please. Um, could I ask our counsel or LA to pull up? I guess this would be entered as exhibit 20. Uh, the reimbursement request memo dated January 30, 2019. And Ms. Rosario, you should have a copy of that reimbursement request memo in front of you. It's also on the screen. So we'll just go through some of the purchases.
Wait, object, I'm sorry, just a minute, please. We're trying to find the document.
My apologies. Ms. Rosario, it's actually a separate document from the inventory.
And what exhibit is this?
This would be entered as exhibit 20. Okay, are you ready? Ms. Rosario? Okay. Um, so this is a request for reimbursement that the governor submitted to the Secretary of Finance, Ms. Larissa Larson, on January 30th, 2019.
Stop. Can I have the translator uh, translate that question? My couple.
Es guizesti na, no, um, bandani i gubetnu an olum isnya, um, uh, reimbursement got to, um, gi as, did you mention the name?
Um, yes, from Larissa Larson.
Larissa Larson gi January 30, 2019.
And if we could just scroll down a little bit, counsel, to the justification part. So these are a number of expenses that were submitted for reimbursement oh, between December 2018, uh, actually from November 2018 through December 2018 and, uh, also January 2019. Uh, but we'll be focusing on the reimbursements that were submitted as office supplies for office use according to the justification that the governor submitted. And if we could just quickly scroll through to his signature. There is his signature. Ralph DeLeon Guerrero Torres declaring that the above information is true and correct to the best of his knowledge and that this expenditure is for a public purpose and therefore meets the public purpose test in accordance with Public Law 1184 as amended by Public Law 12-2. So, um, counsel, if we could please go to the, the first receipt. Um, I guess it would be the second receipt on page three of this document. Uh, this is a Walmart receipt. And from this record, it shows that on New Year's Day, January 1st, 2019, Governor Torres went shopping at a Walmart in Boise, Idaho, and purchased, among other items, two 70-quart coolers. The coolers cost $114.48, including tax. And then on January 30, 2019, in this memo to the Finance Secretary, he requested reimbursement uh, for a number of expenditures, including $114.48. Um, the Walmart receipt incl- uh, comes with a handwritten note. We could scroll down to the bottom. Um, cooler is for office, cooler for office use. And, um, and again, as was stated earlier, the justification in this, this request memo notes office supplies for office use. Um, Ms. Rosario, do you see the receipt?
Can you repeat your question only?
Ms. Rosario, do you see the Walmart receipt that is dated January 1st, 2019?
Um, Ms. Rosario, only enoi recite Walmart dated January 1st, 2019?
January 21st, look at.
Inero dia uno.
January 1st?
Dosmit disanwabi?
2019.
Ungan siga.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you recognize the handwriting on the receipt?
Unrekenisa noi handwriting gi recebo? Ai tiu rekondiseste?
No, I didn't recognize it.
Okay, so it's not yours?
It is omo, it is omo no, no handwriting?
Ahhi, tiu oko.
No, it's not, it's not mine.
Okay. Are these, have you actually seen the 70-quart coolers at the office of the governor?
Ko, ko unli i isti i dosna coolers gi ofisina ni gubetnu?
I don't know if these two, um, uh, 70-quart coolers, uh, in the receipt were, um, part of the inventory? Keiko? Hmm.
Leku tiutumu.
Or also the same on the list?
Leku tiutumu ko esti i dosna 70-quart cooler ni gaigi gi recebo.
Okay, I don't know if these two 70-quart cooler that is in the receipt, shown in the receipt.
Ko poti esti gi zin inventory na lista.
If it's part of the inventory list.
Thank you, um. And have you ever seen 70-quart coolers at the office of the governor? You yourself, have you seen?
Guaha cooler gi ofisina lo tiutumu ma gaita manu na dinankulu.
Uh, yes, the, uh, coolers at the office, but I have no idea how big they are.
Okay, and what are these coolers used for?
Can you please translate?
The funny, uh, for soon this is a coolers.
Para todo function i government, parewa an man host gi guma nya pat man afan set bigi often hosting, uh, often a, no, events gi publico.
But for, uh, for the governor's use, either hosting at his house or other events for the public?
Uh, objection, I think she said the government's use, not the governor's use.
Gov. Go, eh, for the use of the government's use, uh, either at his house or at public functions?
Pat is quela.
Or at schools.
Pat edzi i anbetni some to man afan set be ni para man man aduda man na chuchu zan man na gimin gi mounta pocho.
Or on Good Fridays, they use it to give people food and drinks.
Okay.
Zan gi kat kwet manera gi hozi munis sita na dipatamentu zan gin guaha function niya.
And in other matters, in other departments, when they have a function.
Okay, thank you. So, moving on. In the same memo of January 30, 2019, the is, the governor requested reimbursement for a car battery. If we could go to the request memo, please? Uh, please. First page. Okay, car battery, it's there on the request memo, CarQuest. The date is January 28, 2019. So according to the receipt, we could please go to the receipt. Okay. So according to the receipt that's attached to this memo, on January 28, 2019, so two days prior to the memo, Governor Torres purchased a car battery from CarQuest. And there's a handwritten note on the receipt that indicates the license plate number for the vehicle for which this car battery was purchased. And the total amount of the reimbursement requested was $112.10. Ms. Rosario, do you recognize the handwriting on this receipt?
Ms. Rosario, un recognize at the best signature, uh, your handwriting, yes, in a receiver.
Objection, I think there was a lot more statements from Representative Sablon other than just the final question about the handwriting?
Thank you, we are only translating the questions as they are just statements.
My client requested all statements made by everyone be translated to tomorrow as is her constitutional right to speak tomorrow during this official proceedings.
Thank you, counsel. In your, in the letter from Ms. Rosario, she is exercising her right to speak and testify in tomorrow. In her letter, she did not request that the questions be posed in tomorrow as is the constitutional right of those making the inquiries this afternoon.
Again, I object. My client has an absolute and fundamental right to speak and have these official proceedings
duly noted, counsel, duly noted. The witness may answer.
I request that the proceedings in this hearing uma translada todo du gi finu zamuru.
Noted. Representative Sablon, can you please repeat your?
Sure. Am I repeating the question or am I repeating the description?
Including the description, the witness has asked for the translation.
No problem. So, the governor submitted a request for reimbursement for a car battery.
Stop.
I go bet no, uh, no allum, recebo, uh, para, uh, battery and karetta.
In the same memo that we're looking at.
Gi pareu na, miss, miss mu na memo ni ta atan bago.
That is dated January 30, 2019.
Ni ma de, January 20, 20?
2019.
2019.
And according to the receipt that is attached.
That's a good new receipt, recebo ni ma taktat.
Which we are looking at now.
Ni ta atan.
On January 28, 2019.
Ki January 28, 2019.
Governor Torres purchased a car battery from CarQuest.
A, a Governor Torres, si Governor Torres, uh, momon, uh, battery and karetta gi car, geni, uh, CarQuest.
And there is a handwritten note on the receipt.
The go hang, uh, tenegi gi ni gi alumi recebo.
Indicating the license plate number.
Number to gi i license on a, uh, karetta.
Of the vehicle for which this battery was purchased.
Uh, ni, uh, ni, uh, my phone is the batterya para estina karetta.
And, counsel, actually, if you could scroll down a little further, there's additional writing at the bottom of that receipt. Okay. So it reads, there's, there's the license plate number and it reads battery replacement for GOV, GovLPADG2A2.
First, eh, recebo ni.
That part doesn't need to be translated. It was a statement to the counsel to scroll down and she simply read the notes on the bottom. Thank you.
So the total amount of the reimbursement request was $112.10.
Posi todo mon ni, um, my request for my past that the, $112.10.
What? 10 cents.
10 cents?
Yes. Ms. Rosario, do you recognize the handwriting on this receipt?
Ms. Rosario, un recognize i tenegi gi ste recebo. Ah, here, no.
Was this car battery recorded in the inventory of the Office of the Governor?
My recorded ste, eh, car battery?
Mm-hmm.
Eh, eh, battery and karetta gi inventory. Ah, here, no.
Have you ever seen a car battery in the Office of the Governor?
Co guahanin listi karet, eh, battery and karetta gi office in any government. Ah, here. No.
And would you say that this car battery was properly described in the request memo as an office supply for office use?
Can you repeat your question, Representative Sablon, and break it down, please?
Sure. Would you say that this car battery?
Stop.
First, co, sinamana sangana esti i battery, i battery and karetta, go ahead.
Was properly described?
Go ahead.
In the request memo as an office supply for office use?
Ma, ma po lugi office memo, uh, as office supply, is that what you said?
Yes. For office use.
Para office, oh, oh, usuni officeina. Ah, here. No.
Okay, so it's not an office supply?
But the office supply is the, ah, here, no.
So what, what is it then? How would it be categorized? How should it have been categorized?
To offer month, after money, porun categorize ste. Porun alu pori ste. Tata, i office in a, i government, par i administration na ha indica monu ni para ugai gi i, i batteria, zangin mafohan i batteria. Posti sini ta alu na.
Can you, uh, pause so that the translator can have some time?
Yeah.
There's nowhere in the office, uh, I'm sorry, or anywhere? Ms. Rosario, would you please repeat your answer?
If in a senya si Rep Sablon ney, i zangin tai gui i batteria, pat ti gi office supplies para usun officeina, plus, go ahead.
After money, ni porun categorize.
Ah, ta manu, ne para un categorize, ene i batteria.
Okay.
Pues no, you too, monu, ne poruma categorize i batteria. Other than tenengo una ta necesita i batteria para operationi officeina.
I don't know where a battery should be categorized. All I know is that the battery is necessary for office use.
But not as an office supply? Right?
Low, the o, the o, office supply, didn't test it?
Ta dono humu battery and karetta manasit bigi officeina para office supply.
I've never heard of a car battery being used in office of, for, considered as an office supply.
Thank you. And let's move, let's move on. Um, so in the same memo of January 30, 2019.
Okay, gi miss mu memo, ni ma de January 20?
30.
30, 2019.
Governor Torres also requested reimbursement for electronic items.
Excuse me, Representative Sablon, can we call for a short recess, please? Excuse me, Representative Sablon, can we call for a short recess, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I understand that Representative Probst has some follow-up questions on the previous line of questioning regarding the battery. And so I'd like to yield at this time to him.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Representative Ed Probst.
Thank you. Thank you for yielding your time. Ms. Keiko, earlier you had stated... Earlier you had stated that the car battery is necessary for government operations. Is that correct?
I'd like to recognize the translator.
Ms. Keiko, earlier, it was said that a battery is necessary for...
Earlier, you had... For office operations.
...office...
Chair, I need to object. That's not a proper translation of the question.
Rep. Probst, can you please repeat?
Yes, I apologize. Earlier, you stated that the car battery was necessary for government operations. Is that correct?
No, earlier, it was said that a battery is necessary for government operations. ...for government... It was not clear, I think, Representative Tina Sablon.
That's not quite clear of what Representative Tina Sablon had asked.
She asked me that if the car battery is not indicated... ...in office... Office supplies.
She asked me in what category would the car battery be placed on?
...for office supplies.
Oh, is it on office supplies? And I replied back... And I replied back that I have not known ever for a car battery to be a part of the office supplies.
Objection. She said to be bought as office supplies.
To be bought as office supplies. One moment, Representative Probst. I want the record to state that the witness did in fact state... Yes, that is what I had answered. Representative Probst, you may continue.
Okay, so with that said... Have you ever seen a car battery purchased before as enlisted under office supplies?
No, nothing.
Thank you. So it's out of the ordinary, correct?
I have not seen that.
Thank you. The license plate listed for this battery... The car license plate is listed... As ADG282. By any chance, do you recognize that license plate?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. No, thank you. Based on your... Based on your experience... One second, let me try to rephrase that question and make it a bit more easier for translation. The license... I'm sorry, the... Based on your experience... Based on your experience... Do you think... Do you feel it is acceptable? Or, yeah, acceptable? To buy a car battery... For your personal vehicle... And get reimbursed for it? No.
I have not seen that being done.
Until now.
No.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rosario. I appreciate your answers. Madam Chair, I yield at this time.
I have one question. Can I make it clear what I said about I haven't seen it up to now? Go ahead. Give me answer. Give me answer. I have never seen it even up to the present time.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Rosario. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairwoman.
My question is, is it acceptable for Governor Torres to purchase a car battery for his personal vehicle and be reimbursed for it? I cannot answer that clearly because I have not seen it. Thank you. Can we go back a little to the reimbursement memo? There. Scroll down to the second page as well. Five thousand three hundred eighty-eight and eleven dollars. Go down to the signature page, please.
Claro genen estina memo na i gubernu mangogo po'ma reimburse balin... Can we go back to the amount, please? Balin singku mid trescientos ochenta y otso za'ansi sentimos. Incluso genon na genago po'ma reimburse sasono esti irisibuni bateriya.
Can we go back down to the receipt?
Claro guestina memo na mangogo i gubernu para ma apasi tati ni esti ifinahonya na baterian kreta ni para karitonya petsunat. Ahi ti karitangubernu esti.
That's all I have. Okay, I stated that it is clear... The witness stated that she has never seen a reimbursement as such, and I stated for the record in vernacular that it is clear that the governor in this memo requested over five thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and eleven cents for various items, including in this memo a receipt for the battery that he purchased for his personal vehicle and that it is not a government vehicle.
Ti utungu po' esti i...
It wasn't a question, Ms. Rosario. I was just stating things for the record. Oh, okay, sorry. Representative Tina Sablon.
I do understand that Ms. Rosario has said that she has never seen that kind of reimbursement before. But I think the question that has not been answered is if you did see it, would that be acceptable to you?
Elengmona taza no niun li i estina classin... You've never seen this kind of receipt or...
Reimbursement?
Taza niun li i estina classin reimbursement. Lo ungan un li i sa pues po' un li i ko acceptao. Because you've seen it.
The question is if she did see it, would it be acceptable?
Oh, yeah. Pus zangin un li i ko acceptao? Taza no li i estina dokumento lo zangin pakti esti gi kada gubernu ni manonna inizilingya or official na representasyon den ileko na sinaha maaksepta.
I have not... Seen this document, but if it's... If the reimbursement is being submitted as an official... For official representation, then it would be considered acceptable.
Okay, but the question is if you saw a reimbursement for a car battery for a personal vehicle, would that be acceptable?
Lo zangin un li i irisibuni poma apasi tati gasto nya ko acceptao para petsunat na kreta ko acceptao esti.
Ti senya oppino kabalis sa tiutungu ko karitangubernu esti para petsunat na kreta.
I can't answer that completely because I do not know if this vehicle is a private or a government vehicle.
Right, but the question I'm asking is if it was for a personal vehicle, would that be an acceptable expense for reimbursement?
Zangin para petsunat na kreta ko acceptao eno na gasto.
Ti utungo omopiano.
I don't know how to answer that.
Okay. I yield, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will break until tomorrow afternoon at 1:00 PM. So we will... Well, I'm sorry, 1:30 PM. So we will...
Just a minute, please. Chair, we're available 1:30 tomorrow.
Donkla nasizosmoses esta gupa gala una i media. Yes, we will... We are now in recess until tomorrow at 1:30 PM.